Welcome, everyone, to the Tuesday, March 18th, 2025 Tom Water City Council Meeting. We will start off with roll call.
Councilmember Leetta Dahlhoff.
Present.
Councilmember Angela Jefferson.
Present.
Councilmember Joan Cathy.
Present.
Councilmember Eileen Swartout.
Present.
Councilmember Michael Althouser.
Present.
Councilmember Peter Agabe.
Present.
Councilmember Kelly Von Holz.
Present.
And I'm also present, so join me in our salute to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first item on our agenda is a proclamation for Women's History Month, and Councilmember Dahlhoff will be reading.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas, the city of Tom Water strives to promote a strong and inclusive community that recognizes and celebrates efforts to bring people together for a greater good and highlight the many threads in our fabric that make it strong and whole. And whereas, International Women's Day is celebrated globally on March 8th by those who believe in gender equality and who seek to improve the lives of all women through cultural, legal, economic, and social change. And whereas, in 1987 and each year since, Congress has passed a resolution recognizing March as National Women's History Month. Women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation and have served our country courageously in the military. And whereas, women are critical to the economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of life. By con- const- const- Who wrote this? Constitu-ing. Constituting? Man, this is gonna be a rough day, Debbie. A significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home. Women have served as leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist emancipation, industrial labor, civil rights, and peace movements, which create a more fair and just society for all. And whereas, the National Women's History Alliance designates a yearly theme for Women's History Month. The 2025 theme is "Moving Forward Together: Women Educating an Inspiring Generation", which focuses on celebrating the collective strength and influence of women who have dedicated their lives to education, mentorship, and leadership, inspiring generations both past and present. Now, therefore, Debbie Sullivan, the first woman mayor of the city of Tom Water, does hereby proclaim the month of March 2025, National Women's History Month, and she urges people to take actions against gender bias and inequity and join her in recognizing women's contributions to culture, history, and society.
Thank you. We have Shelley Willis is here to accept this proclamation, and Shelley is with Family Education and Support Services, and so Shelley, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. Tonight, I represent the Zonta Club of Olympia, and on behalf of the Zonta Club, we extend our heartfelt gratitude for your recognition of National Women's Day. As Ruth Bader Ginsburg once said, "Real change, enduring change, happens one step at a time." Your acknowledgement of this day is a meaningful step forward, ensuring that the contribution struggles and triumphs of women are recognized and valued in our community. It is through such actions that we continue to build a more just and equitable society. For years, the Zonta Club of Olympia has been steadfast in its advocacy for women's rights, education, and empowerment. We are reminded of Maya Angelou's words, "Each time a woman stands up for herself, without knowing it possibly, without claiming it, she also stands up for all women." By honoring National Women's Day, you are amplifying the voices of women who have paved the way and inspiring future generations to stand tall in their pursuit of equality and justice. We deeply appreciate your leadership in recognizing this important day. May we continue to work together to create a world where every woman and girl has the opportunity to rise, thrive, and leave her own lasting legacy. Thank you for your commitment to this progress, and as a symbol of our respect for women, we have yellow roses, which is our Zonta Club of Olympia's recognition of leadership. Thank you.
So, here's a proclamation, and I also want to present you with a pen, the official pen.
Thank you.
So, and as she's handing it up. So, I appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Do I get one? Is it an alimony?
Me gender can support women.
Oh, those beautiful roses. Thank you very much. Our next item on the agenda is public comment. Do I have anyone signed up for public comment? Do I have anyone online signed up?
There is no one online signed up for comment.
Okay. Okay. Linda Burt, come to the podium. State your name and address for the record in three minutes, and I'm not sure who is doing. There we go, the clock will be... Three minutes, not 30 minutes.
Yes, it's 30.
You need to take a zero out of that.
It said, "Each time a woman stands," and that's where I'm at.
Right.
I was here eight years ago when Tim was the mayor and asking, my husband was still alive, asking for help with getting our rent manageable and our cap. I want you to know that since that day, this woman has had both her sister and one of her brothers murdered in gun violence. My husband died, I had a house fire, and my two baby rabbits died. So, I've come a long way, and it's taken me a long time to return. Tomorrow, which is why I speak now, tomorrow I am going to testify at the hearing. I think it's in room, hearing room four for the Senate, because I suddenly realized that this issue is being dealt with wrong, as far as I'm concerned. Because people, and it includes the council, include all people who rent. All people who rent go in this circle, I'm gonna teach you. But that's, we aren't all in the same circle, and it's terribly unfair that we're being treated as such. If you had a Venn diagram, you would show the people who rent apartments. You would show people who rent houses. And I hear that one of the loudest naysayers landlords say, "Well, that's not fair. If you cap the rent, then what are we gonna do if we have to fix the roof?" And that's where I come in. I am not part of the apartment, apartments, I am not part of the house. I am part of the manufactured houses. We own them. You don't have to fix anything. You're not even fixing our carports. If we don't fix them ourselves, they'll tear them down. So, yeah, I'm gonna see if I can teach that little group meeting tomorrow about how we can take a Venn diagram and pull it apart and hopefully solve at least our problem at Laurel Park. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? That was the only person signed up for this evening. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak? All right, with that, we will move to the next agenda item, which is the consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
All right.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Swartout, seconded by Councilmember Dahlhoff. So, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. All right, the motion carries. With that, we have approved the minutes of the city council meeting of February 18th, approved the city council minutes from March 4th. Payment vouchers, Resolution Number R 2025-006, which is surplus property. The First Amendment to the Service Provider Agreement for Fair and Peers for the Transportation Plan of the 2025 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update. Service Provider Agreement with the Thurston Regional Planning Council for Transportation Modeling. Lease Agreement with Kaufman Holdings for the 821 Airport Court, which we will be having staff located there. An Advisory Board Appointee of Sandra Nelson and Nalita Daniels for the Planning Commission. And so, we're having more planning commissioners. We kinda go high and low on that one. So, we now have planning commissioner, enough planning commissioners. So, with that, we will now move to the public hearing on R 2025-005 in support of the Tom Water Transportation Benefit District Prop 1. And then we have staff, they'll be presenting. Thank you, Brandon, you can go ahead.
Brandon's fine. Well, thank you, Mayor Sullivan and councilmembers. I'm Brandon Hicks, Transportation and Engineering Director for the city. So, I've been here many times to talk about the Transportation Benefit District potential renewal over the last few months. So, there's nothing that I'm gonna tell you tonight that is new to you. And really, tonight is about you all having an opportunity to speak about your support for the Transportation Benefit District renewal. There's very little that I can say right now, other than specific facts, and I'm actually being so careful that I'm just gonna read off of a list here that I have. So, I apologize, this is the second meeting in a row that I've done this. The specific purpose of this agenda item is to consider Resolution Number R 2025-005 in support of the Tom Water Transportation Benefit District Proposition 1. And y'all decided to put this on the ballot on January 21 through adoption of Resolution Number R 2025-001. Resolution Number R 2025-005 is essentially a collective statement from y'all in support of renewal of the Transportation Benefit District, which you're aware is an existing 0.2% sales tax. So, this is just continuing that same tax for the next 10 years. If Proposition 1 is approved, the TBD sales tax is estimated to generate over $30 million for street and sidewalk maintenance over the next 10 years. And here's the best part, I'm actually already done. There's very, this really isn't meant for y'all to speak. And with that, I'll turn it back over to you.
Great, thank you. Any questions before I open up the public comment portion of the public hearing? Hey. So, I will now conduct a pu- we will now conduct a public hearing on R 2025-005 in support of Tom Water TBD Prop 1. And so, there was a signup sheet, did anyone, no one signed up on the signing sheet in the back of the room? So, we will, I will go ahead, and did we have anyone signed up online?
We do not.
Okay, I will still open up the public comment portion of our public hearing. So, since no one has signed up, and we have no one online, I will call for anyone in our audience who would like to speak on this topic. So, so with that, with no comments, it has to do with our, the sales tax we do to help maintain our roads and streets. So, and it'll be on the ballot for a community to vote on. All right, with that, I will close the public comment portion. And then, any council comments, or I know we're kinda limited what we can do, but any council comments? All right, I will start with Councilmember Jefferson.
I strongly support this Transportation Benefit District because we need to maintain our streets and sidewalks. I ran into two big potholes in front of City Hall last week, Thursday, and I complained loudly about my tire rim, cuz I knew how expensive they might be to replace. Well, I didn't call into City Hall to say, "Hey, come replace these potholes, cuz they're just awfully big out here." And I was surprised to see that this morning, the potholes were filled in. That's because of this benefit plan. When something happens out in those roads, in a jiffy, we're gonna get it fixed. I've heard some complaints on social media that we are taxed enough. No taxes, I'm gonna vote no this time. Well, I urge you to think about that. This is not a new tax. This is just an extension of what we have going. It's a good thing. Let's not say no and go back to pot-filled roads. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thank you, Mayor. In alignment with Councilmember Jefferson, this is not a new tax. Proposition 1 simply renews an existing sales tax to fund street and sidewalk repairs and maintenance. The current tax adopted in 2015 has enabled Tom Water to pave over 100 lane miles of streets, fix many sidewalks, and add bike lanes. It's a smart investment, having attracted over $6 million in grants to stretch local funds. It's fair. With the large retail stores in Tom Water, much of the sales tax will be paid by people from outside the city using our streets to shop in Tom Water. Thus, the expense will be shared by all of us who use the streets, not just Tom Water residents. It's accountable. These funds can't be diverted to other uses. They can only be used to maintain existing city streets and repair and expand our sidewalk network. They cannot be used to subsidize new development. It makes our community safer. Well-maintained streets and sidewalks connect our community, benefit our businesses, and help police and firefighters respond faster to emergencies. I urge your support and your vote.
Thank you. Anyone else want to make a comment? Councilmember Swartout.
Thank you, Mayor. It's hard to believe that it's been 10 years. My, when I was a brand-new council member, it was, this was the first thing that we dealt with that came across, and it was a big deal. And so, I really appreciate Tom Water's support. The residents had faith in us, and we talk about promises made, promises kept. And this is one of the programs, and we have such a strong engineering staff, and I have to pass off to Director Hicks for his management on this. I've served on the Public Works Committee for years as well, and just every year, he has a plan as far as like what roads we're gonna cover, and he's been able to real, secure grants, and so, we've been able to stretch this funding even farther. I appreciate the fact that it's a dedicated source of funds. And again, too, it is a renewal, it's not a brand-new tax. We had other options. I believe Olympia does a $40 car tab fee for their residents, and we didn't wanna put the burden on just Tom Water residents. People from all over the community come in and use our roads to shop in our stores, and so, it's fair, it's equitable for the people that are coming in to pay their portion as well, as far as, and it's two cents for every $10, you're looking at two cents. So, or a dollar, two cents for every dollar spent. And so, it's, it's a way that we can do this in a rather painless way of maintaining our roads. But I also, again, wanna commend Brandon as far as the, how much he's been able to accomplish over the years and how we continue to need this money, we still have more roads to fix. And so, I would encourage people to vote in favor of this initiative when it comes before you on April 22nd.
Councilmember Althouser.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with everything that's been said and has already been said more articulately than I can offer. I just fundamentally think that this is, this is just, transportation is just a core tenet of city government in terms of our role of maintaining a city as a place that's accessible for everyone. And one of the points that Councilmember Dahlhoff made, I especially agree with in that it's just absolutely critical for public safety. Whether it's a fire truck arriving quickly, like those potholes are gonna inhibit that fire truck just as much as it'll inhibit any car going to the grocery store, or if it's one of our police cruisers out on patrol. Like, this is not just for roads, it's also sidewalks, and it's also like critical to our public safety and for our strategic planning for the future. If I sort of look at the delta between where we were 10 years ago with roads and where we could have been had we not passed this in the first place, I think our roads would be unrecognizable today. Like, they would just be riddled with potholes in disrepair, and in the long term, that'll actually cost us even more money through delayed maintenance and additional challenges. That also like is bad for the environment, too, because you get more washout. So, I think this is a smart strategic choice for a number of reasons, too many to sort of name, and I think Councilmember Dahloff, you made a lot of really great arguments in support of this. It's just fundamentally a core tenet of city government. I do not know what we will do if this does not pass. Our roads will fall into disrepair. The delta that we would have experienced then is still on the table, and that's probably what will happen if this doesn't prevail at the ballot. So, I'll be voting in support of the resolution. Thank you.
Great. Any other comments? Councilmember Von Holz.
Thank you, Mayor. For many years of my state service, I worked for the Department of Transportation. I worked for the state maintenance engineer. And time and time again, I saw our state highways, the maintenance funding be underfunded. Always, the investment goes into new infrastructure, but if you don't maintain the infrastructure that you have, then what's the point? So, I will be voting in favor of this proposition because I believe in maintaining our roadways is, is the roadway to public safety. It's a roadway to Tom Water, it's our kids getting to school, us getting to work, us getting to go see our parents that might be in a, you know, nursing home. Without this funding, our roads will fall into disrepair, and we will, won't see new infrastructure because we'll be so busy rebuilding what we already have. Thank you.
All right, any other comments? I guess I will just close with this. One of the things that I always hear is, "How do you know if you're in Tom Water, or how do you know if you're in Olympia?" And I said, "Just go down Capitol Boulevard, where the pavement is really nice, that's Tom Water. As soon as you go into the rough asphalt, that is Olympia." So, this is just a prime example of where maintaining surfaces, resurfacing, and those kinds of things make it really good. So, that's just like a really visual example of what we're doing with those tax dollars and how we keep our streets well-maintained. So, and I, and I know we can't hit everywhere, all the time, every year, but we do get it in a plan, a work plan, and then also leverage other grant funding and do projects, utility projects, and all of those all at the same time. So, yeah, so this is very vital to keeping our streets and our infrastructure solid and stable. So, all right, any other comments? With that, I'm ready to hear a motion. Councilmember, Councilmember Swartout.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number R 2025-005 in support of the Tom Water Transportation Benefit District TBD Proposition 1, renewal of sales tax, sales and use tax for transportation improvements. That will appear before the voters on April 22nd, 2025, special election ballot.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion on the motion? Okay, with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, everyone. All right, our next item on our agenda is the employment agreement template, and Administrator Parks will be presenting.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, our new filling clerks over there on the corner for putting the presentation up for me. So, this item is coming to the council from the Budget and Finance Committee. They recommended approval of this item, but they also wanted to have this item on the consideration agenda so the council could review and discuss the particulars of this that they discussed in their meeting. So, just a little bit of background. So, in the city of Tom Water, in the mayor council, or a strong mayor form of government, the mayor selects and appoints our different department directors. In this form of government, however, the council approves contracts and agreements. And for the city of Tom Water, all of our 10 department directors, seven of our 10 department directors actually have employment agreements currently. We have three department directors that do not currently have employment agreements, and we wanted to take a look at ensuring that we get new agreements for those who don't have them, and looked at this as an opportunity to address some of the differences that the existing agreements have with them then, and take a look at how we could maybe standardize those agreements. So, again, we have seven directors who have agreements. The fire chief, our transportation engineering director, administrative services director, police chief, water resources and sustainability director, the city attorney, and the city finance director. There are three directors who do not have agreements. That's the Parks and Rec Director, Community Development Director, and our new IT Director position. So, the goals of this process are threefold, essentially. It, from a sense of parity, we feel it's important that all directors have agreements. If one or five of them have them, then all 10 should be treated fairly and the same. We also look at this as being a benefit that we can provide to our candidates for director positions. We can't always pay the same wage that our comparable communities can, particularly the city of Lacey and the city of Olympia. And this great agreement is one way in which we can add a benefit to sweeten the deal, hopefully. And then, by authorizing this template, we're standardizing an agreement that would be, again, consistent across all of the existing director positions. So, the goal of this project specifically would be to both replace the existing agreements that we have with the updated standardized template, and then to use the template for future agreements, including those that, for our current directors that don't currently have them. So, the current seven employment agreements have a lot of consistency in terms of the terms that they have in place. There are some areas where the standardization are, will become more perfunctory, grant, grammar, word phrasing, sections, those types of things. But there are substantive changes to the template that will standardize certain components of the agreement across each of the director positions. So, the basic terms of this employment agreement that's outlined before you tonight, it would outline the duties of the different director position, and those would rely specifically on the job descriptions. So, the job description gets attached to the backside of this, each agreement, which then makes it particular to a specific director's position. The term of the employment agreement is, it emphasizes the fact that department directors serve at-will. It is an indefinite term, but it also is no guaranteed tenure. So, it really is intended to be an at-will contract. There is a provision, and this is one provision that is being standardized across all of these agreements. There is a severance package where termination, as a matter of right, without cause, might occur for a different, for a director's position. The current severance terms for our director agreements range between two and six months for the seven directors that have those agreements. This particular template suggests six months, which is actually consistent with the city administrators' my, my employment agreement. And then, the salary is clearly identified, as is the case, that the salary for these positions is based on our salary and grade system that is approved by the council each year as you're adopting your budget. So, the requested action is to have, to approve and authorize the mayor to sign this employment, employment agreements with current and future directors. And the form would be substantially that which we have provided to you in the packet. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Councilmember Jefferson.
Yes, Administrator. What, what is the why?
What, what is the why? Why, why are we doing this? I mean, I agree with it, but tell me the why.
Really, the why is, um, as I mentioned, is to, uh, ensure that all of the directors have employment agreements. Uh, that seems to be the fair thing to do. The other issue is to standardize the agreement, uh, across those different director, directors, so that the basic terms, uh, are the same for each, each position.
Okay, is this, what, is this union requested, or just HR decided, hey, we need to standardize the process?
So, so we have an op, we had an opportunity, um, that we needed to address in terms of the three positions, directors that don't have agreements currently, um, and we looked at this as an opportunity to standardize at this point in time.
Okay.
And one of those directors have been here for over 30 years, so.
And the other one's been here for 32.
And then, these positions aren't covered by the union, correct?
Correct. These are not union positions. Not at all.
Any other questions? All right. So with that, I will, uh, ask for a motion. Councilmember Swarthout.
All right. Uh, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign employment agreements with current and future directors in substantially similar form, consistent with adopted city policies as approved by the city attorney, as recommended by the Budget and Finance Committee at their February 28th, 2025 meeting, to be placed on council consideration.
And I second that motion.
So it's been moved by Councilmember Swarthout, seconded by Councilmember Jefferson. Any further discussion on the motion? All right, with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Yeah, it's been kind of all over the place with, uh, contracts, and, and as we were looking at jobs last year, you know, all the salaries is, some of these things are just so out of alignment, just really need to get, um, fixed, so. All right, with that, we are done with our council considerations. Uh, next will be, uh, community, uh, committee reports, and the first one is Public Health and Safety. Councilmember Agabi.
Thank you, Mayor. I am, uh, having difficulty remembering what we discussed, but, uh, we, we met, um, last week, and it was a, uh, very lively discussion. We had, uh, uh, the presenter was, uh, from the, uh, Thurston County Prosecutor's Office to update us on activities, uh, within the City of Tumwater. And one of the things that I, that I think I could lean onto is that, uh, the City of Tumwater has had, uh, significant, uh, activities within the, uh, Thurston County, um, Prosecutor's Office, and of those were, um, domestic violence. And, uh, the number of our cases have gone up, and then, uh, we talked about, uh, what might, uh, led to that, uh, but the way it was, uh, there wasn't really any, um, that you could point toward it, and they just went off. And then, uh, the, uh, from the Prosecutor's Office, we were told that, uh, they have, uh, they, uh, for third-year, uh, law students who are, uh, in, in law school, that, uh, they, uh, hiring those that currently work for them or, uh, willing to work for them based upon the condition that they filed their lawyers at, at the end of the, um, at the end of the day. And then also, um, I think, uh, that is pretty much, uh, what I can remember from our discussion.
Great, thank you. Uh, General Government Committee, uh, Councilmember Althausser.
Thank you, Mayor. The General Government Committee met this morning, actually, in a special meeting. Uh, we had a pretty packed agenda. We covered two more elements of the comprehensive plan. We talked about the climate element, the resilience sub-element as well. That was a really robust discussion, um, and I'm really, really pleased with the progress that we're making so far in the drafting and development of that. We also talked about our housing goals, policies, and implementation actions element within the comp plan. Um, we have some homework assignments for that one to review that and send comments back to staff by, uh, I believe it was the end of April, in order for those to be, um, incorporated and considered into that element. So that one's a, a little bit behind some of the other ones because it's so, uh, dense and important, not to use a housing pun. Uh, we also covered the food system plan as well, and there was some exciting progress to hear about on that. Um, we are sort of nearing the next phase of that, where we are going to move from sort of assessing the food system as a region, and then moving into kind of the meat of what is the city's role in kind of addressing the resilience of our, of our food system more broadly. We, um, also had a couple of action items. There was approval for a 12-year MFTE that will be on a forthcoming council agenda. Um, and then there was also a service provider agreement with TRPC for some modeling work, and that was our meeting.
Great, thank you. Uh, Budget, uh, sorry, Public Works Committee, Councilmember Swarthout.
Thank you, Mayor. We will be, uh, meeting this Thursday, March 20th, bright and early at 8:00 AM, and we have a number of items on the agenda. One, we have acceptance of work with the J.A. Morris Construction for Tenant Improvements for the W, the WERS offices at South Peters Town Community College. Acceptance of work with West Coast Fence Pros for the Palermo Security Fence Replacement Project, uh, discussing the Schedule 74 Design Agreement. And last but not least, the construction contract with Northwest Cascade Inc. for the Linwood Avenue Sidewalk and Cessitna Lane to Second Avenue Project, uh, request for additional construction funds.
Great, thank you. And the Budget and Finance Committee will meet the, uh, Friday, the 28th. Uh, so now we will move to Mayor-City Administrator Report, and, uh, Administrator Parks will start.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a couple of things tonight. Uh, tomorrow at the Tumwater Chamber, we have representatives from our Tumwater Police Department, uh, giving the chamber members a presentation. So Acting Chief Mason, Deputy, uh, Deputy Chief Keelace, and Dr. Bowers will be there, um, talking about, uh, current trends, challenges, and opportunities with our community's law enforcement, talking about public safety initiatives, uh, as well as talking about how, uh, Tumwater Police Department can strategically partner with local businesses, uh, to foster success and security within our community. So, um, don't miss out on that. It is, um, between 12 and 1 tomorrow at New Market Skills Center, and it is, uh, $20 for members and $25 for non-members. And then I wanted to give you an update from, uh, the CARES program. So our, um, CARES program, as you recall, is a partnership with the City of Olympia Fire Department. Uh, we are sharing a person. Ariana Gomez is our halftime employee. She's here, um, working on CARES referrals in Tumwater. And as a reminder, and for people in the community who may not, may not know, CARES stands for Community Assistance, Referral, and Education Services. Um, and, um, Ariana is set up in, with office space in our headquarters building. Uh, we'll have a vehicle for her very shortly. Um, and, um, all of our firefighters have had training now on the CARES referral process, and we've had 11 community members that have been referred for assistance. And really, the idea here is to take people who would normally call 911 because they didn't have any other option, but the service they really needed was help getting medications or help getting, uh, they had a home safety concerns, things were, that were not necessarily emergent in nature. Uh, and, uh, this CARES program is assisting those people with those types of activities, and we are really excited to have Ariana working with us and our fire department. And with that, I can answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and then mine is, um, I have not had any meetings since our last, uh, council meeting, which is surprising. I'm not sure how that worked. I know, don't jinx it. Uh, but I will have, uh, Transportation, or, uh, sorry, an EDC Economic Development Council meeting, uh, next week, so I will have a report on that. Uh, and so with that, I will move to council reports. Um, Councilmember Kathy will give her report next, uh, meeting. And so with that, Councilmember Agabi, hopefully I can start with you to do council member, uh, council reports.
Thank you, Mayor. So, um, on March 7th, I attended Thurston County Regional Planning Council, and, uh, at that meeting, we had a presentation from the Lot, um, Director. I gave an update on Lot's current, and, uh, current activities and future activities. And then we also have a, a very, very lively and long presentation from the Intercity, uh, Transit. They gave an update about, uh, the new transit system that they are currently working on and how that will benefit, uh, Thurston County. So, for example, one of the things that they, uh, gave, uh, placed an emphasis on is that currently, uh, you don't have a school bus route, uh, no, school bus route, uh, buses route going to, uh, schools, uh, grade schools or high schools. So for example, Black Hills High School. So they plan on having, uh, buses going to such places, but I don't know how feasible that is going to be if our buses go to Black Hills High School, given that, um, buses can turn around in that area. But, the presentation was that, uh, they are going to make sure that, uh, all of the, uh, all of our schools, uh, buses are covering them. And then, uh, they also talk about the new, uh, bus stop and route, and how buses, uh, will be going forward, will be more modernized. So that was a very lively discussion that took, uh, a while. Um, and then, uh, we have a Regional Transportation Plan, ROT, Future Conditions. Staff presented, uh, staff presented review of the ROT Future Conditions, focusing on the how and the, um, and how the Thurston County Region would change between now and 2050. So essentially, this is a takeaway from the Intercity, uh, Transport, Transit Update, kind of piggybacking on that, how this region proposed to change constitution-wise. So that is my report.
Great, thank you. Uh, Councilman Ron Hulz, do you mind if I go to you next?
Doesn't matter. Could. No, thank you, Mayor. Um, let's see, I had Public Health and Safety, look, that was only last week. Uh, and that was a great meeting, and, um, I also, the week before, had, um, intercity transit, and I have a meeting tomorrow evening. Um, we're going to get a region transportation update from TRPC tomorrow, so that will be, um, great. Um, the intercity transit meeting before, we had an update on legislation, um, regarding transit authorities all throughout Washington, and, um, how it looks with funding. And so that was a sobering, um, meeting, I think, um, with a little bit of hope. So, um, I'm excited for tomorrow's meeting, and I will also be at the Tumwater Chamber tomorrow, and I think that's, that's enough.
Great. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Jefferson.
Um, yes, thank you, Mayor. Since I missed the last city council meeting on the 4th of March, and I will tell you why in a minute, on the 27th of February, the EMS Council meeting, uh, we covered several key updates. Uh, the first ALS Academy had 40 participants, they all passed and approved, and the empty class with 30 enrollees started, uh, supported by the county. Staffing updates included the departure of two personnel. The 2024 EMS Comprehensive Plan was discussed, emphasizing future EMS delivery and partnerships. Concerns were raised about the plan's alignment with the mission statement and the process for board approval. Um, on the 4th of March, I attended an Equity in Education Forum. I recently attended this forum, and a decision was made for me not to attend a city council meeting because I wanted to know more about SB 5044, uh, from a legislative perspective. What is this bill? Um, the, we, they most, the forum mostly spoke about cultural competency, and it's aimed at enhancing diversity, equity, and inclusion training for educators and school staff in Washington State. So as a city legislature and someone not in education or a school board member, why did I attend this meeting? And this brings me back to when I was first appointed to the council, and Councilmember Joan Cathy asked me, well, um, what do you think about the racial incidents that we are having, you know? And I told her, you know, talking about race is hard because we, we, we come at it from just different perspectives, and we look at it differently, and it's just a hard discussion, but we have to talk about it. So this is one of those where we, we have to talk about race because if things is going on in Thurston County. And so, um, one racial incident that recently happened, I would say maybe about eight weeks ago, which shook me to my core, was when the parent of a biracial boy called me because his son was spit on in the face by a little white girl on the school bus. The incident was caught on video, and you can clearly see the boy remove the spit from his face. Um, yet the parent was not notified of the assault. When the military dad finally met with the school principal for a meeting, he called me, and I told him, contact the, uh, superintendent because he was being ignored for a meeting. So he finally got the meeting, and he was told that it was not an assault because the girl did not physically hit the boy, put her hands on him. Spitting in someone's face was not an assault. All the dad wanted was an apology to his son and a clear policy and procedures. When a child is assaulted, a parent should be immediately notified. He was told by the school's principal that he would not get an apology, and that the responsibility lies with the school transportation department, not the school, because it didn't happen on school grounds. These complaints are about public health and safety of our constituents. It's about the mental health of these school-aged kids and parents. Senate Bill 5044 is a bipartisan bill which took 10 years from start to finish. It is a crucial step in ensuring that our schools provide an inclusive and supportive learning environment for all students, particularly those from historically marginalized communities. This law is also about the civil rights of students. I've been talking about the rise of civil rights lawsuits for several years now. I remember when I first served on the Public Health and Safety Committee, we did not renew the SRO contract right away because of our concerns for our school resource officers and the city. It is a known fact that there is a movement where cities, individual police officers, and departments are actively being sued because of failures to follow proper procedures. In closing, as a Tumwater City Council member, my role extends beyond city governance. It includes advocating for policies that foster equity in education and preparing our future workforce. The insights I gain from the forum will help guide my work in promoting policies at the local level as I partner with Tumwater School Districts. Here is an example. We are trying to save the FRESH program because of budget cuts, uh, at the school district level. The FRESH program is a prevention program at the high school level for at-risk kids. I went to a meeting today along with Councilmember Swarthout, and, uh, the students came up with, um, a plan to save the FRESH program. So they had a meeting, I went in there, spoke to, uh, a parent, she literally had tears in her eyes. She said, if it wasn't for the FRESH program, my son right there would have committed suicide. So this is something that I'm looking at. I'm also partnering with, um, Councilmember Dahlhoff. We had a meeting with the deputy superintendent to ask, how can we assist? So we're talking to nonprofit groups so we can help, uh, save the FRESH program. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thank you, Mayor. Well said, Councilmember Jefferson. I had Lot Clean Water Alliance. I had Lot Clean Water Alliance. The highlights for that is the board declared the Henderson Boulevard property in Tomwater a surplus. The board approved the use of the $125,000 from our Affordable Housing Support Program, shared pool for the Franz Anderson Housing Project. You might have heard Councilmember Althouser and Kathy talk about that from the Regional Housing Council. So Lot did approve that. And staff provided updates on the hauled waste receiving station. They're doing some updates on equipment there where they have to close the road on Franklin for potentially four years. So looking at, it's gonna, yes, thank you, Eileen, that's, yes. It's substantial because they have to have a huge crane, yes, and they have to build the crane and then use the crane and do all this work that's tens of millions of dollars, tens and tens and tens and tens of millions of dollars. So looking at where food trucks and RVs can go and dump their waste. So we've come up with a plan for like key cards for food trucks and then also opening up weekend hours for RVs so it could be beneficial for them to load, offload their waste. Might be more than you wanted to know, but now you know. And if anyone's interested in those slides, I have those slides to share. The Thurston County Opioid Abatement Council met and Administrator Parks and myself attend, will attend and attended that meeting. We talked about the process, how it's structured, what the funds could be used for. And so just wanted to share with everyone what you can spend the funding on if there's overlap with some of your committees, like I'm thinking Tomwater Hopes, Councilmember Jefferson. But I'm also thinking of some of the nonprofit boards we also work on besides. So I'm thinking together, right? So you can use it for treatment, connections to care, recovery support services, primary prevention, overdose prevention and harm reduction. So I'm also thinking about police and fire and the work that they're doing with the FD CARES, with the scout program that's being worked on. Is there any overlap to some projects that are, could help constituents in Tomwater, first responders, leadership, planning, and coordination, training, and research? So as these meetings will be continued monthly, Administrator Parks and I will be coming back with updates and seeing how it can impact Tomwater and we can move forward together. And then also I have Public Health and Safety, General Government. And that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Althouser.
Thank you, Mayor. My committees actually have not met since our last council meeting, but the Regional Housing Council meets a week from tomorrow. So I will have a full report at our next council meeting.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Swarthout.
Thank you, Mayor. It's interesting how we have kind of intersections in our, the committees that we do, that we serve on and outside committee work. And so Councilmember Agabi gave the report for the Transportation Policy Board. And we basically heard the same, same information at the Thurston Regional Planning Council meeting. And so, and I found they, we had a presentation from Lot, which was really fascinating. And then also too, the inner-city transit update, which was really, really good information. And then also covered the regional transportation plan, the future conditions. The meeting that, for, excuse me, for TRPC. And then I wanted to put a plug in for tomorrow night. The transportation element will be meeting, that portion will be meeting tomorrow night. See, we will be, see, they'll have an open house and it's going to be here at City Hall and it's going to be from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And anyone interested in the future of running, walking, and cycling in Tomwater is, is encouraged to attend. I sent this out to my running friends. And so hopefully we'll see some people here that want to see safe streets and, and, thanks much.
Great, thank you. All right. Oh, already did that. So with that, with no other business, we will go ahead and adjourn. And I will, we will see everyone next week at our work session. Thank you.